Now I'll call the Pawnee Business Council Special Meeting to order at 5:59 PM, January 9, 2018. Call for invocation. I'd like to ask Mr. Long Chief, would you read your prayer for us?
No, I did. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for giving us these blessings and giving us each day. We thank you for feeding us when we're ill, comforting us when we are grieving, and watching over our servicemen or women, our elders in nursing homes, hospitals, or homebound. While we pray that you look after our small children, keep them under your constant care and vigilance, keep them from harm. We pray that you bless Pawnee Nation and give us the wisdom and knowledge to deal with our everyday business concerning our tribe. We pray that you will give us deep insight on how to resolve conflicts, how to conduct business as you would have us conduct business. In closing, we just thank you for, again, for your many blessings for your son dying in our place to ensure that our sins be forgiven. Bless all these council members, their families and extended families, and all of our Pawnee tribal members. In your name, Jesus, we ask all these things. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilmen. Called upon Secretary McCray to call a roll.
Bruce Kraft.
He was excused due to illness.
Darryl Longham.
Here.
Patricia McCray here. Angela Thompson.
Here.
Sammy Adson.
Yes.
Donna Hare.
Here.
Charles Long Chief.
Here.
Charles Knight Chief.
The excuse is he is on call.
Oh, yeah, he's on call.
Okay, we have a quorum and move on to the approval of agenda. There's been a request during the executive session that the Pawnee Nation Attorney General Annual Evaluation be excluded at this time as it's been moved to February. Is there anything else that needs to be added or approved? Okay, called for a vote. Oh, sorry. Called for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion to approve the agenda.
No, seconded. This is being... Motion made by Donna Hare, by Councilor Long Chief. Called for the vote.
Patricia McCray, yes. Angela Thompson.
Yes.
Sammy Adson.
Yes.
Donna Hare.
Yes.
Charles Long Chief.
Yes.
The approval of the agenda has been approved and move on to minutes of... Approval of minutes of PBC meeting of December 14, 2017. A motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
Dr. Donna Hare has made the motion for the approval of minutes. Pray here a second.
I second.
Secretary McCray has seconded that. Now called for a vote.
Patricia McCray, yes. Angela Thompson.
Yes.
Sammy Adson.
Yes.
Donna Hare.
Yes.
Charles Long Chief.
The approval of minutes has passed and on of December 14, 2017. Move on to the Business Council President Report. He is not present, so we'll move on to item six, the Business Council Committee and Tribal Reports. Are there any to report? Mr. Long Chief, are you any...
I have nothing, thank you.
I have nothing. No, I have no travel, but my committee met and the agenda items are on here, so I'll talk of them at that time.
Good point.
I have no travel request, and we have a enrollment committee tomorrow, and we're revising the statute, working on that, and we have an HR committee meeting later this month.
We also had a strategic planning meeting today as well, so we'd like the nation to know that we have business with our strategic planning and looking forward to that.
Yes, there was a strategic planning meeting.
Yeah, I think we've made a lot of progress today.
We're looking at Brian Kirk's handling this and doing... And Mr. Andrew Knight Chief, and we've got... We looked at long-range and short-range plans about future enterprises and so... And various committees were not formed, but they were added to those committees and things to look at in the future. As for myself on travel, I last month I attended the tribal agricultural council meeting in Las Vegas. That was very interesting. I'm not familiar with ranch and farming, being raised in the city, but it was very eye-opening to me to see what other nations, Indian nations, are doing around the country in the way of agriculture, in the way of cattle, horses, and especially products in the way of crops. And it seemed like the... For what I was... Notice or saw just was really impressed was the number of nations that spoke highly of the Kwapaw tribe of Oklahoma. Many of the nations around the country have been going to Kwapaw to seek their advice on how they went about doing where they're at today. They have a rather large cattle industry and crops, and all started with a small greenhouse. And of course, they said it was nothing that was done overnight. It took 15 years before they really saw something. They were able to provide their own vegetables and meat products to their own casino, and now they're providing those same products to the local grocers there. And so it's quite an accomplishment they have done for themselves. And so hopefully, we can, as a nation, can lift them for advice and how we can go about moving forward with some of our own agricultural endeavors in the future. Moving on to item seven, are there any travel requests in council?
One of my earlier reports for the Tribal Interior Budget Council, they have established a budget subcommittee work group to address the budget formula... Formulation process within the Bureau, within Department of Interior. And this is due to a lot of the regions. They feel that the information through the budget, current budget formulation process gets lost up the chain, and so this has been a hot topic for the... Since I've been on there. They developed a subcommittee, and they wanted a representative from each of the regions to be the primary, and so I will serve as the primary for this subcommittee, and they're meeting on January 29th and 30th in Washington, DC. And this will be paid for by DOI. So I'm requesting to be out at that time for that meeting.
Okay, thank you, Treasurer Thompson. Are there any other requests? Okay, I'd like to call for a motion for the approval of travel for Treasurer Thompson.
I'll make that motion.
Donna Hare has made the motion. I'll second it. Mr. Long Chief has seconded that approval for request. Called for a vote.
Patricia McCray, yes. Angela Thompson. Sammy Adson.
Yes.
Donna Hare.
Yes.
Charles Long Chief.
Yes.
Motion was made and approved for travel for Treasurer Thompson. Can we move on to the Pawnee Nation College Report? Mr. Burgess, President Burgess.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. You all enjoy the new year, wherever you did. Darryl and I know, we exchanged names. But I've got your electronic report, and it's not a whole lot to say today. As of today, we have 28 students enrolled. However, we finished last semester with 43 students in college courses, and I believe it was 21 in certificate programs. And we expect about the same number this time this semester. I don't have the report, but we are writing a new proposal to Department of Education aid American Career Technical Education Programs. We've been notified that we're in our final year of funding, the fifth year here at this time. And so we are going to be adding to our curriculum something called Scribes. I think I talked about earlier. Yes, we'll be adding that, and we think it's going to be hit because we found out even IHS is interested in Scribes over here. And these are people who have training already in the nursing field, have specific classes, and so we're adding to that. So we think we're going to have a pretty good pool of students because we've had inquiries already. So the word is Cleveland Hospital is interested. Cushing had called in, they heard about us, wanted to know when we're going to start. So actually, we won't start this until fall because it'll be part of the new grant that we're going for. And we're not guaranteed more than two years of new funding for DOE. However, based on politics in Washington, DC, it could be three, it could be five years because of the turnover, the voting, and all of that. So that's been the mainstay. That's 99.99% of our funding with DOE. We are going to have our next quarterly meeting will be March 10th and 11th this year. Okay, make sure. Last time I had the wrong year, okay? And we want to say thank you. Buddy came to our meeting here, being appointed. We had a good session. Dr. Dupree showed up from Baycon, and he was very enlightened, our working together and seeing how it comes along as small as we are, and thank you. One of the things we're having to do, the Native American Career Technical Education Program in DC has told us to be very specific about the classes we offer, and they want to see us offering classes that lead towards employment readiness or job, or if the student carries on, they want to go into four-year program. So we're revamping our program, not shutting down American Institute, revamping it or renaming it a business, Pawnee Nation Business Curriculum. But all of that is the same, and we're going to follow the format with Baycon so that the accreditation will follow. So if we're at AIS, we're going to say business. So our chief is working on that right now. My two professors, Kim here, Ms. Kim Murray, a doctor... Not a doctor, but our Indian doctor after college, always teaching us all about medicine and his head here. And we're doing that new project with OSU, and he's been doing a lot of research, bringing out a lot of plants, physical plants, that we want to put on the wall there. So we're doing a lot of research for that, and that's what's gotten us tied in with community college and Hason interest. I understand that they might have heard about us. We're going up in April to find this up, and all of our students, participants will get certificates of appreciation or accomplishment. It's specific land, it's talking about soil, moisture, things that we don't have here on our curriculum. Our students will be getting attention after then. So down the line, the community college, there are Hason who wants to network with us, maybe exchanging students, bringing professors down and helping us out to increase our natural resources program because they have a degree in natural resources. That's what I'm hoping we can get in the next year or two of new funding, new sources, and teach our students more about natural resources. You're hearing Darryl talk about farming and grazing. You know, it's all based on knowing soil, how different plants use it, what you can put back into the soil to reinvigorate it, how water can be captured. Desert farming, if you want to call it that, drip irrigation, hopefully use it thousands of years. So those kinds of things we have to reteach here to get our seeds involved, particularly from the viewpoint food safety here. One of the big things I've read about is farmers' markets are growing here and there. People are just processed food that we get, those of us who get commodities, private goods, large bad. Oatmeal's good, you know, but when you sit around and eat a lot of cheese, it's not good. Those kinds of things we have to educate our people about and get them to be moving around. So I'm all for banning cell phones, video games, hand... I was reading a lot of that, and how we... Our generation moved. We invented toys. We didn't have electronics to make us sit down and do that, so I witnessed it with my children. So those are the kind of things we're having to reinvigorate our curriculum, a healthy lifestyle, just for the family. But that's some of the things we want to do with... In the future here, the new grant process taking over at USDA, we're working with the city of Pawnee. We have a meeting next week, more planning session with them to get an MOU with them, and then we can go forward with our proposal with USDA to utilize the old hospital here in town for more classroom space. And I passed a December budget along to your finals here, month of December. Any questions?
I have a question, Mike. On your statement of financial position, the... All of the assets that are listed here are those outside of the only grant, separate from the only grant?
That's the revenue account. Yes, that's outside of only.
Okay.
I don't have it combined. Fiscal year is July 1 to June 30. So that's just the revenue account.
Okay. And you utilize those spends for other things outside of...
Yes, particularly support for our meetings, DOT, some travel arrangements, short-term or something for... It's not related to the grant. My staff to travel, it has to be related to the training and/or student activities. So sometimes we kick in for that, and then when we have visitations, receptions, thank you sponsoring communities, we use a revenue account for that. And then that's going to be utilized in the future here. We are right now using Taylor Moore and his assistant, Zach Rice. We want to expand on that. They will have to... Their contract will come out of revenue account. We can't put them onto a DOE grant. So we're... I'm finding ways, experimenting, other funding to bring them in to give more cultural programming because I can't include them on a DOE grant because they're not job or innocent jobs specifically, but because we're Pawnee Nation College, we're trying to keep the cultural aspect involved. And so we're reaching out to EH or any other cultural, historical areas like that for funding.
You had mentioned that you're developing certification courses related to job readiness.
We want to do some short-term courses in the business, give them people background in what basic accounting, bookkeeping, basic leadership, styles, management techniques. Those would be like eight to 12 hours long, maybe two quarters, certificate along the way. That satisfies DOE that we're training, and this could work for any worker, working adult or individual on the job, even to teach HR, basic HR policy procedures and how to follow, how they're incorporated. Because as maybe you know, but you and I, we've been out there in the world all over. When you hire people who don't understand, well, here's HR, you give them manual, take it home, they don't need it. Well, I didn't know that. Sometimes you have to put some orientation or indoctrination, sit them down, ABC, what this means. So to teach that, for them to learn that, again, teaching them that, it's very important you follow HR policy and procedures.
Right. And so for a student to access these courses, they would have to be enrolled in the college? And it's those two...
No. If we did the certification courses, we would do them on weekends or evenings. As asked, if we could do this for casinos, then we could. So what we would do is put it out of work schedule for these students, working adults, two or three hours, maybe twice a week.
Because we've identified that there's a need to address those types of barriers within our enterprises as well as our tribal, and we want to work towards collaboration with Education Darrow, TDC, and now the college that we know that's here for life and those same types of programs to get our people job ready so that they know how to maintain and obtain that.
How to fill out the application, you know, sit through mock interview sessions.
Yes.
Understanding the question to be answered.
Yes.
And then doing what you say you're going to do, be on time, you know, follow directions.
Exactly.
As long as you're following OSHA. That's the second part about it. Very important you understand that OSHA has requirements. And I don't think... I'm not sure... I'm pretty sure you're okay here because I see it posted that EEOC guidelines and rules, you know, Fair Labor Standard Board Act, those have been incorporated since 2013 into CFR 2. Many tribal people don't know that. Tribal governments don't know that. That's been incorporated.
So I'm hoping that maybe we all, once we get this going, and we'd like to talk to our ED to give the directive on how to work through this, that we can all collaborate together to address this need in our community.
I think we could if we sat down and everyone talked about what it is they see lacking in employees and how we provide that. And if it's possible, we could do it at the evening hour, 5:30, 6 o'clock, for an hour and a half, two, three times a week to get them through, get them certification. It helps us with our numbers. It'll help the agency with people understanding their roles and responsibilities as employee.
Okay, great.
That's a win-win, everybody.
Yes.
And I particularly see it that the... Because you have, what, three sites, three casino sites? And I don't go to all of them, but I see different faces all the time. So I know that there can be a need turnover because, one, if you work a year or two, you get offered another job elsewhere with better pay, sometimes you jump. But if you work into a system here with HR that there's a reward at the end, you stay long enough, go through your training, and then promotion, that... Those kinds of things can be worked out.
Okay, great.
Any other questions?
I didn't. Mike, I'm sorry. I missed the dates for the quarterly meeting, the 10th and 11th or the...
We take the 10th and 11th. We've been given two days because it kind of helps something on the agenda or sometimes our... Those are tribal factors, so we start later, finish up later, and the next day finish up later.
That's a Saturday/Sunday.
They told me the 10th, so it should be the 9th and 10th.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, then 9th and 10th.
9th and 10th, excuse me.
That's okay. Just wanted to make sure we have it here. That was it, thank you.
Mr. Burkes, I'd like to let the council know you do a very effective job. You passed your evaluation that the board did just recently, and you're very good with fashion figures and you keep everything in good order. I think that the plans that you've made for the future are positive, and the individuals from Baycon...
Dr. Dupree.
Yeah. He was very positive in what you're doing. And these medical scribes or whatever you're talking about, I think that's going to be a real plus.
I think so. If we could do it soon, and we will, but we just can't get it in the budget till next, that's all.
Is there any way that 477 funds can be stolen and transferred over to Krane? No?
Only if you were to designate certain employees or somebody, you know, that's only what I think 477.
We would have to write it into our plan. There's a lot of things that has to be done. We can't just transfer it over. We'd have to do... We'd have to get approval from, what is it, Indian Economic Development, IEEC or something? And put it in our plan for us to even consider that.
And you probably have to put an individual work plan to get it for certain ones.
That is the question.
Yeah, but that's a concept that's down the line, you know, because a lot of larger tribes don't go 477. They've got enough funding to buy, so they don't even look at it like that. I've noticed with some smaller tribes, they do 477, so there's multiple layers that you have to go through for this one. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, President Burgess. Now moving on to item nine, Section Director Report. Mr. Andrew McIntosh.
Good evening, council. So we finished out 2017. I think we did a good job of writing the laws and policies that we need to put in place in our faculty. We are looking currently for a program, software program, to handle all our applications and licensing and tax so that everybody can go online and fill out the form online and pay their fees online and the licensing and tax, and that's all of our fees and all of our licensing. So our regulators, you know, do their job of regulating rather than collecting the fees. It all should come through tax anyway. But it'll help clear it up because one of our concerns with the Energy Act was that we don't want to be seen as delaying or unnecessarily causing undue delay on these individuals. So if we streamline it, make it under one umbrella, then these individuals can go online, fill out their application, pay, and then come in and do their work and reading without ever having to, you know, run around Pawnee Nation looking for... But it's very important that we streamline it all and make it user-friendly for the people that are being regulated by Pawnee Nation. We are also... We got another grant. We have the Wellness in the New Country Grant awarded to us. I'm very proud of DHCS for writing and giving that grant. Brian and I continue to look for grants, and we're going after everything that we can and trying to... We're no longer just passing up grants because they may be small amounts or whatever. We're going for everything and writing for everything. I think it's important to diversify what we do here. You know, that's part of the process of us doing the organizational chart, making sure that we're streamlining the way we do business and learning. And so we're continuing that, and it's going to take a little bit of time. One thing I've always kind of wanted to get the nation away from was this idea of naming department after a grant because what that happens, what happens is we become too comfortable with that grant going away and that employee going away. We just go, okay, well, your grants are also, see ya. We need to do a better job of naming the department, and I always pick on ICTG because it's the most obvious one, naming the department like Tribal Infrastructure Development, and going after multiple grant funding sources to maintain that. So if we lose a grant, especially in today's political environment, it doesn't cost us a salary position or an employee because we spend a lot of money training our folks, and we can't just be so easily dismissive of them just because there's a grant opportunity lost. It doesn't do us any favors, it doesn't do the tribe any favors, and it definitely doesn't help the tribal citizens because we cannot lose that. because we cannot lose that wealth and information. So that's kind of what we're doing on the administrative side is really hammering through the work chart. And while we're doing that, Brian and I are going out onto the grants and we're looking to match grants with that, with those specific departments that we're in, and try to go after those grants, identify them so we can self-support it if you're able to find a reason. The other thing we're doing, it's taking a little bit of time, is we're doing a punch list. All the directors, division directors are tasked with putting together a punch list of the entire tribal jurisdiction, where they work, the office space. Because the one thing I'm going to demand this year is a more disciplined approach to facilities maintenance. Rather than waiting for things to constantly break and rather than waiting for things to happen, let's be proactive. So let's have our division directors identify the structural weaknesses within the facilities. And it could be anything from a leak in a toilet to a scratch in the paint. But let's identify it so that we can prioritize as a nation and then every year do a project, every year do a project. It's more disciplined. It makes more sense with the buildings that we have because they're old. We understand they need a lot of maintenance all the time. But if you're just running, waiting for things to break, you're just going to constantly be in that circle. So we need to be more proactive. It's taking time, but the directors are slowly getting that information together. And once that's done, we'll present that to Budget Committee with the cost estimates so the council knows kind of, okay, this is the big picture, this is everything, and this is your price tag. So how do we budget it on a yearly basis to move forward and make sure that we're approaching it systematically? So that's one thing we're also doing as well. It's a big goal for this year. The other thing is the Ag Plan. We're continuing to develop that, Brian and I, and, well, not just Brian and I, but it's a team effort across the board because it covers all the disciplines within the nation. We even got an intern from Oklahoma State University. He's a doctoral candidate. He is going to be writing a dissertation on sustainable rural economic development, and he's using the pawning nation as his springboard. So that's going to help us immensely because that will give us the data and stats we need to go after USDA grants and go after the US Department of Energy grants because he's going to get the data and statistics. And so I think it's going to be a real, real plus for the nation to have this. And it just feels right because we're starting to get all of this expertise surrounding the nation when it comes to Ag. And like Vice President Wildcat stated, you know, we can do things at the quad block. I mean, there's not, nothing's off limits. We just have to set goals that we can reach. And every time we reach a goal, make a new goal, and then just keep expanding out. So that's kind of where we're at as a nation. We're still dealing with a budget issue. Harrison is going through with finance and he's going to close out 2017. Once we close out 2017, then we'll start going through 2018's budgets like we did in 2017. And we will present plans to the Business Council about where our spending levels need to be in order to maintain kind of what we're doing. We still have our spending discipline stuff in place for the most part. I mean, we've allowed a little bit more travel than I wanted, but we're going to cut down on that a little bit more. Mainly because, you know, we run into a situation where we have, you know, really important things that these guys, that these employees need to pay, real important tournaments. And it's kind of hard to say no when it's going to benefit the tribe, and I know it's going to benefit the tribe. But we're going to still be disciplined about the spending and the purchasing. So there's things that we can do administratively to make sure that, you know, weather this financial kind of situation a little. So we'll know. We told the Budget Committee, Harrison and I, that we will present a plan to them in February by the, was it the second meeting in February? I think it was the second meeting in February. So that we can, that budget can present it to the council as a whole to see exactly where we're at in the area.
Adoption.
Adoption, correct. Yes, ma'am. So that's where we're at. We're dating before, so do I have any questions?
Yeah. You kind of went over it really, really quick.
What was that grant from?
It was, I think it was from the CDC. It was the Good Health, or the Good Health and Wellness in the Indian Country Program.
That's my sister.
Yeah, because it's a mouthful. But again, it's important that we go after these grants because they all support a vital function. You know, this is not like a $300,000 grant, but it'll provide, it's actually going to be administered by diabetes. And so it'll go to help a diabetic program. We're also looking at, the CDC just put out a notice of a grant to replace the pawning product. So they're redoing that again. So we're going to start, we've already actually started writing for that grant. So hopefully get that back in place because that was a really good program. Everybody just, I mean, the community loved it. They're all paying for our five babies and everything else. It was a really good deal, so that's what we're doing. Yes, ma'am.
Just a couple of, in our strategic planning today, we've discussed a couple of things that we probably need to follow up with you on is, one is we talked about fleet management. And I know you and I had had a discussion mid-year last year that you were going to look at establishing that fleet through, under transportation. Can you kind of give us an update on where that's at?
Yeah, we finished writing the policy. It's done. It's just going through the administrative steps to make sure that we're not, because it's kind of a mismatch of different things. Other tribes have fleet management policy. Looked at, GSA has their own fleet management policy. So it's just going around the level of my directors for comment. Once that's done, we're going to raise, the council will pass it, and we're going to have a fleet management policy.
Okay, great.
So it's been written. It just hasn't been rushed out. It's still kind of a process.
And part of that fleet, transportation department, if you will. I know that we've been talking over the course of my tenure here, getting funding for transportation, you know, the little, many vans, if you will.
Yeah, the local.
To, yes, to get our elders back and forth to the bank and over to the elders program or perhaps students coming in, you know, from the schools over to the nation or, you know, after school care, what have you. And I really wanted to see if we can figure that piece out.
Yeah, that's a little, that's weird looking at that, but it's a little bit more complex than just a fleet manager because of the funding.
That's what I'm talking about.
Right, like CHR is very limited in what they can do.
Sure.
And we definitely want a rural transportation because I don't know how many times I've had veterans tell me that they can't get to employment down those things because nobody can take them. And the VAE can recognize that. And so we've had discussions with the VAE, Veterans Administration, about trying to refund it. We also had a discussion with the USDA because USDA and their rural development grants, they provide some. It's all matching and everything else, so it's a work in progress.
Yeah.
The other piece of the fleet management, of course, is kind of like the pawning nation needs to do a drug testing policy, not tribal law, for those people that take care of gifts or drive vehicles, they can test them on a regular basis. So that's another piece that's been written, that's done, that's done, being written as well. It just needs to go through its editing and draft phase before it comes to council. Those are the two bits. So the pawning coming very shortly.
So this fleet management, just the concept real quick, I just like getting my head around it. So it's going to be accountability for the fleet, if you will. They're going to be tagged?
Correct.
They're going to be painted like pawning nation, probably a pawning nation. And then are they also going to be maintained? They'll be maintained as well, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, that is, I mean, right now, we don't want to, we don't have the space right now, our own workspace, but that's one thing that Chris O'Crain is working originally on, is looking for funding to create a mechanic space so we can do oil changes, tire changes on-site. Because there's a huge volume of nation to have to go outside and pay for those types of upkeep on those vehicles.
Another option too, is for sustainability of that, is that, at one place that I worked at, they offered those types of services to their employees and did a payroll action to pay back.
Correct. That's one thing we want that too. Yeah, that's a great idea.
It is. And it works out good, you know, because you automatically deducted them their paycheck into their signed agreement.
That one tribe had an auto mechanic and a detailer.
Yes. Yes, it's an awesome service for our employees as well. One other thing is that this, we had a discussion on in our strategic planning, was the tribal law and order code. And I noticed you had that project on here. Can you give us an update on where that's at?
That is, in its infancy, it is a big, big work, a big piece of work. What my goal is, is to identify kind of what the structural deficiencies in it now because some of the laws that date, I mean, a lot of the laws that date, especially on the procedure side. And identify those things and then go on after a grant to outsource that responsibility and writing it with that specific intention of looking at an outline of where, what we want to see fixed because it's, there's no way that I have the time to write a tribal law order code.
Another resource is to tap into, we can submit a BIA project, a special project today. I do believe they have some set aside monies for TNTA training and technical assistance.
Technical assistance.
Yeah, we might want to tap into that and just submit a project to get it started.
Which is something else that I've been working here recently with the Supreme Court here at tribal courts. We are, I'm in discussion with them because they can help identify some of the weaknesses and procedures that they see. And so we're working hard at the heart to try to get an idea of what that is. And again, it's not to rewrite it because I don't think, I mean, I definitely don't have the time and I don't know if anybody else certainly does because it's a big process. But we need to at least identify what we see as the fundamental weaknesses and give that to some specialists who can sit down and write a really good code.
Other things that were discussed is even collaborating with TU Law.
Correct.
Let their students do it or review it, analyze and make recommendations at least.
Yeah, and it would be better to piecemeal that out because we look at that too. And there's other things coming down the pike as well that we need to identify. One of this tribal parole probation consortium, you know, we're already gone with the five tribes of the cause and the top causes and the others and the offices and the state. And we're getting a consensus together so we can manage, send in a central location, manage probation parole for Native American offenders coming out. And, you know, we've already talked with the state probation parole head guy. And we're excited, they're excited about it. They know that it works in Washington State. They know it works better than what they do. I mean, heck, we went up to the probation offices in Tulsa and it was just Andrew only outside the door and inside, there's nobody to do the services. And too many of our tribal members probably slipped through the cracks and then ended up re-offended. And that's something we wanted to do. And so we're talking with them, we're going to work, we're getting sourcing together. And the other piece of that is we have ways here that are really beneficial to probation and parolees, like TARA. I've talked with the TARA director already, and he's on board with trying to write something into where, when these offenders get out. One of the first stops is to check in with TARA to get all the skills bank and job banking because we don't want to lose them, you know. When they're, when they're fresh out of jail or fresh out of their court proceedings, they're still in a positive mindset, they're still in a disciplined mindset. So we want to capture that as quickly as possible and get them working as quickly as possible. So that's another thing that's coming down the pike too, which is, it goes along with our consortium for the domestic violence, a lot of those things I don't know if you know. Because one of my goals is, I realize that the pawning nation can't do it all. So why not partner with some of these other tribes that are struggling with some of these other issues than we are? Get together as a community and solve these problems as a community. So that's kind of where we're working to, on a big, big one, big picture. Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to remind, I just wanted to remind you to be on the watch for Office of Minority Health. It's about this time of year that they do their NOFOs or.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, and they've got some really good funding.
Yes, they do.
Might be interested in college.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Mace is not present and, for it, so we're going to move on to new business. I'm sorry.
Well, Marcus, you just discussed on homecoming.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, I have full business list.
There's no all business, you said.
No.
We didn't, yes, you took it off.
Oh, okay, fine.
Okay.
Okay. What about the pawning nation attorney general report? He's not present and no report was submitted.
I don't have a report.
Yeah, I know a report was submitted.
We should probably record it and, oh, yeah, forever.
The Attorney General is not present and a report was not submitted. So at this time, we'll just move on to new business, according to my agenda. And item one for discussing, the Pawning Homecoming Veterans Organization. I address the council right now as president of the Pawning United Veterans. Our, and this has been something that's been discussed for many years, ever since I was younger. I've had, why not the homecoming? You'd be moved to our own reserve for our homecoming celebration. And that came up in a recent meeting of our veterans organization, that why not move it to our reserve, to the Moses Yellow Horse Wall Field? And we had a discussion on that and we was talking about what needs to be in place there to make the move. And of course, the lighting was the main, main thing. There is no light there. And I have been checking around the cost of these rentals for generators with lights. And I'm still getting costs of these items. And we talked about, and I talked with President Pratt about this and I asked his opinion about it. He said this is, he said this is something we've been talking about for years, we need to move to our own property. But he felt at this time, it's not enough time to move forward with it. He said, maybe in 2019, once we get everything in place. With him meaning that our campground is already built and in place, new showers, new toilets, and a bigger campground over there. And he brought up how to handle parking campsites. They're going to have certain designated areas for campsites or parking. Are we going to have feature seating? This is items that at RV we didn't think about. And, but I thought it was some good points he brought up. And I just, I said, this is something good for, because he wants to see it too. And most people I've talked to said, yes, we need to have it on our own property. But he said, beware, you make the move, it's, there's no turning back. There's no turning back. Because once we leave the confines of the school district, which they have their property, the county, which is where we're also on their property, and also the city, we use those three entities for the homecoming. And so if we make a move, that's going to cut ties. And so let's have everything in place and be ready for a committed move when we do move. And he felt this was, wasn't enough time to get things in place and need more discussion. And I said, well, this, this will bring it up for discussion. And it's how we can move forward on this. Is, I'd like to see this on our own property. And I talked with the law enforcement. They said they would welcome that, being here on our own reserve because they would have jurisdiction, as it is when we're on the football. As it is when we're on the football field, that's the, that's the city and the, and the school board. And if, what we're camped at, the campground, that's the county. So anything happens, Pawnee Nation has no jurisdiction actually to our law enforcement. And so he would, the officer I spoke with said, we would welcome that, be right here on reserve and it'd be no problem with security and law enforcement on our own reserve. Any comments?
I have one.
Yes.
I don't know if you are aware of that, I did chair the Baroona Powaw in San Diego for about 15 years. They have, I think, 11 reservations in San Diego and this is primarily one of the largest with a funding of about $105,000 that they're, it's up, it used to be like that, it was grassroots at my time. But my experience tells me that, and I'm thinking of the dances here that we've had the last couple of years, I, I usually have always been home for, before. And I myself don't really see a hardship in moving, you could do it this, this year if you think about it. Most Powows around here, nobody has bleachers. You can bring your chairs, you know, you just bring your chairs and they have your benches, but you can't hear you.
Turn your, turn your volume up.
Is that better? Is that better? I don't want to be like having that thing yell. Is that better? Is that better? A little bit? How's that?
Yeah, that seems better.
Okay, okay. So anywho's, and so anywho's, I would say that the bleachers probably would be just a, a minor, very minor thing and to rent generators with lighting is a very minor thing. And your P A system, I think for me, that P A system's really critical. It will make or break, your system will make or break your powwow. If you're too quiet, it's just kind of dead, but you have to have somebody lively. And we've had that over the last couple of years here at Pawnee. And then your, your outhouses, I mean your restrooms and parking, people just figure that out. It's true and we, it's not like we have this gigantic powwow, you know, I think, I don't know what our, our number of dancers are, but I wouldn't say it would be greater than My opinion, so if you want to, if you'd like to include me on your, on your committee, that'd be great. I've got some ideas that kind of are helpful.
Yeah, Pawnee Indian Veterans always welcome Indian Hall people to attend our meetings because we have very limited veteran turnout. And I've opened it up to, I've gone to the War Mothers and I've asked them to sit in our meetings and they have, they've helped us out. They've got some good ideas on fundraisers and stuff and, and I welcome, and we've even, we've even talked about, well, even some of my relatives who are not veterans have said, you know, my father, my brother was a veteran and said, why don't I include us? I said, yes, you are. You're welcome, anybody who has a, and that's all Pawnee people, having a veteran in their family, if they could come help us out, volunteer, it's all voluntary work, they could help us out and it would be greatly appreciated because we, by you helping out, you're honoring that veteran as part of your family.
May I speak?
Yes.
I got here late, had some family stuff to do. Darryl, I, I appreciate you saying that, you know, all these years it's always been, seems like it's been closed meetings for the veterans, so nobody's really tried to help. But I know that you, you have a lot of people that want to help, so I would, if you could, you know, make that more known so that folks know that we're welcome to come and all that. I think it's a great idea. We're all Pawnees, so thank you for that. And on moving it over to the campground, I would, I, I guess I really don't have a problem with that, I, I don't know, but I would really like to see the council look at taking that land back over there. That's our land and make that our, make it our part of our land, let it be our sovereign land. That's ours and we have a need for it, you know, so please look at that option as well.
You know, Carol, that was even brought up today.
Strategic.
Strategic planning.
Yeah.
That was brought up today.
It all hate. They don't.
One quite concern maybe or potential, have you all, did you all discuss with law enforcement the non-native jurisdiction?
No, we haven't.
Okay, because we wouldn't have jurisdiction over non-natives on our land.
Oh, in case of an incident, is that a trouble?
We'd, we wouldn't be able to prosecute. They would have to submit to our jurisdiction in order to prosecute.
Well, I think that that sign needs to go up right now. If that's the case and they're coming into our casinos and we don't have the ability to, to deal with that, that should be a sign on both of these bridges. Welcome to Pawnee Nation.
By interim, you submit to the jurisdiction of Pawnee Nation.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I agree.
Andrew, where's Andrew?
We need signs.
I'm seeing.
Andrew, excuse yourself, it was, it was out of the weather.
I'm glad you went home. Okay.
All right, yes.
What are the dates for the powwow this year?
You know what? I, I wish I had given it more thought. I'm looking at it, I, off the top of my head, I, I called, I said the last weekend of June, because the fourth falls on the middle of the week and on Wednesday. I wish I'd given it more thought, but I went ahead and told Chamber of Commerce, 28th of June to July 1st.
That's right.
And I, looking at it, I thought maybe I should have went my Thursday to fifth to the 8th of the first weekend of July.
You would have ran into Stroud.
Oh.
Yeah, I think you'd, you'd have ran into Stroud.
So anyway, I went ahead and called June 28th to July 1st. So you say the Stroud has already.
That's just a given.
Yeah, okay, yeah. They usually follow us anyway.
And then Oto.
So anyway, that's the homecoming dates, June 28th to July 1st. And who knows, we may be on Mo's Yellow Horse Fields. We can get, get our act together with Pawnee Veterans and who knows?
Then where are you going to have the Mo's Yellow Horse softball tournament? If you're going to be camping.
We're going to kick them out. Hey? I don't know, no, no, that's, I thought about that too, because that is a big, that's a big draw in itself, the softball tournament, I don't know how we're going to work that out. We may have to, for nobody, softball tournament.
We'll figure it out.
But right now, we need to, if we're going to move, that's the only place right now that's, it could be, that's kind of somewhat ready to go because it's an open area and open, who knows, maybe down the line we can move to another part of the reserve and with, and with our own facilities in place of electrical, water, all the utilities that need to be, that could be done later. Right now, it's a start.
That's good.
And you know.
I would say just let us know when your meetings are and.
Okay, Carol was right, I need to, you know, I've just, it's just been word of mouth to me, you're welcome, come to our meetings. I need to get it out in our publications that Indian Hall are welcome to our meetings and, and it's our next meeting. I'm going to have to get, get together with our drum keeper since he's a waiter at this time, we'll see what his schedule looks like. As you know, our drum keeper is in Hawaii, having a tough time teaching out there. So anyway, as soon as he gets back, we'll get with the drum keeper and see what we can get going, get moving on, on the homecoming and other business that we need to get done, especially more benefits. That's all I have to say at this time concerning the homecoming and I'll get the word out when we do have our next meeting. Okay, going on to, let's go in the item 11, number two, Budget Committee Recommendations.
Okay, Budget Committee met, hopefully was last week, last Thursday or Wednesday. And the only item that needs Pawnee Business Council's attention is the renewal of the American Indian Chamber of Commerce of Oklahoma. The discussion was, what do we really get out of this? There's really nobody that attends. President Pratt was the guest speaker there last month, or this, yeah, last month, but nobody ever attends this meeting. We pay a membership dues, so from that discussion, the Budget Committee recommends non-renewal and they sent it forward to council to vote on whether we take their recommendation or not, so I made that motion.
Motion's been made, I'm sorry, motion's been made for a non-renewal of the American Indian Chamber of Commerce of Oklahoma. Do I hear a second on that?
Angela, can I just get a mind refresh on what they do offer us?
I think they do a month, what is it, a monthly luncheon?
Yes.
At different places and they have certain topics for discussion. I've never attended since I've been on council, I don't know if any of you all can say or provide whether it's a report on it.
No, I know they're going to be at Oto.
That was last month.
Well, they're doing another one this month or either tomorrow or Thursday, I thought.
Well. Any other, got any input?
There's also individual memberships, so if you want to pay an individual membership to be invited, you can do that as well, it's like 30 bucks. So Mr. Mason, he's one of the only ones that would go and I, we told him the good thing, you just pay the individual membership.
I think it's 20 bucks at the door or something like that.
Yeah, you still have to pay at the door if that's for the meal, but the membership for the year is like 30 dollars.
Oh, there you go.
And that's North Central? Is that North Central?
American Indian Chamber of Commerce.
North Central of Oklahoma, because there's also Tulsa.
It just says American Indian Chamber of Commerce of Oklahoma. Low credit out of Broken Arrow, Oklahoma.
We give the notifications for both, Oklahoma City and Tulsa area. You can attend either.
Would say again?
I heard Tulsa's better. Isn't there one for North Central?
Yes.
Out of Stillwater, kind of? Anyway, I heard Tulsa was the best.
Was better?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyway, the motion's still on the floor for an honor bill of membership.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Donna here for an honor bill of membership. Now vote on the motion.
Patricia McCray? Yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Donna, I'm sorry, Sandy Anderson?
Yes.
Donna Taylor?
Yes.
Charles.
Yes. Okay. So it's been announced that we will not renew our membership to the American Indian, American Indian, that too, American Indian Chamber of Commerce of Oklahoma. Okay, moving on to, I have 12 open forum, any, anything to comment on? Yes.
Don't forget I have cake. Cake's sold a very slow tonight.
Hey, whatever reason, God saved this line.
They can sit, I could say.
No, no.
Apple sauce, spices, cake.
Okay, if there's nothing on open forum, there's no, nothing for executive session, so.
All right, the motion table, back in the table.
Say again?
Motion table, executive session for the Attorney General, the dialogue.
We removed it at the beginning and we approved it as such, the agenda. We very removed it out of it, so it's going to go back on.
Yeah, it'll come back, next one.
Okay. That was part, when we approved the agenda, we, that was part of the motion.
Just removed it?
Yeah.
Oh, Angela?
Yes.
We're starting to work on the signup list for Title VI. We go to the national convention and.
Pechanga? Is it at Pechanga? In San Diego?
Oh, yeah, it's in California, yeah.
When should we go toward the Budget Committee?
I made a mistake.
They have some.
Soon as possible.
They have, they have some calls for the airline.
Okay, because we're probably going to have to help you all do some fundraising because we just, we're in a shortfall. And we'll determine how many people and decisions that I can bring back to council so we know how to move forward.
Fundraising.
There, I'm sorry.
That's yours too.
Maybe we can get somebody to donate a TV or a Playstation and sell, you know, chances on that.
I have your blanket.
Yay!
But you're going to need more than that. I would really suggest maybe you think about having like a hand game, doing something fun, you know, social for, for the community and then getting all of that in place because just today Southwest has their specials, you know, that, for their flights and it's sometimes you're better off going through Wichita, sometimes you're better going through Oklahoma City or Tulsa into San Diego. And then transportation to Pechanga should be taken care for you because they have their own shuttles that will come and get you. It's about 40 minutes from the airport.
Yeah, it's not a bad, it's not a bad drive.
It's east, huh?
It's not a bad drive.
Uh-uh. It's about 40 miles out, but sometimes they'll have like bus transportation. But I, I would, if it were me, I would be all over that. Maybe I'll go.
Okay, so our comments are open for a motion for adjournment.
I'd make that motion. Do adjourn.
Motion's been made for adjournment. And who, Buddy? I was thinking, our Buddy has seconded, Long Chief seconded, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's it. That's called a night.